Are we ready? Okay. At six oh two P M on Wednesday, March. March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, I will call the meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission to order. Douglas covered that the meeting tonight will be live streamed. Planning Commission members should use their microphones as well as members of the public speak into the microphone at the podium. All public comments should be limited to three minutes. Please, when you approach the podium, as a member of the public, state your name and the block of the city that you live on. And we will move on to the first agenda item, the approval of the meeting minutes of March second, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I'll motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sufert and a second by Commissioner Polite, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing no opposition, the approval of the minutes passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is, under subdivision and land development, the Saldau modification request for six forty South Franklin Street. Mister Smith, would you like to give some context?
Sure, I'll provide some brief remarks, but I think our applicant probably provide much more context on this. So we're dealing with the Shell Recycling Center, formerly known as. And this site was acquired by the city and has since, it's basically been sitting there, unutilized for a while. There was an agreement that was reached with Thaddeus Stevens Foundation for redevelopment. And this is a request to demolish the building prior to having a final land development plan. We'll be hearing a second request of a similar nature after this. So the Saldau subdivision land development ordinance requires that any land developments be unconditionally approved and recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits. That includes demolition or construction, building permits. So this is why the applicant is before us this evening. And with that, I'll hand it over.
How's that? Okay. I'm Gene Duncan, Thaddeus Stevens College, seven fifty East King Street. I'm the Director of Construction Projects. And as Doug said, we recently acquired a Shell property. We have some pictures here that can show you the condition of that property, and we're concerned about the safety of the public. If someone gets in there, we really don't want them to get hurt, and it is an eyesore. So we would like to tear the building down, remove the catum, remove the concrete that's there, turn it into new pervious soil. While we have our engineering firm bring to the city for final approval for what will eventually be, and I believe there's a print that can be shown of that, a conceptual print. The front half, or a third or so, will be, along Chesapeake Street, will be given back to the community to turn into a community center. And then the rear of the lot will be developed into duplexes, that will build a duplex of yours we presently do now with our students. And those houses will be sold as affordable homes. So we're just looking to clean up the site, make it look nice, make sure nobody gets hurt. And we're starting actually with our affordable housing back in the city now. Well, we will be with the next school year, we'll be building on the corner of South Marshall and Skooko Street, in a vacant lot there, which is right around the corner from this lot. So we're just trying to be good neighbors and clean things up and make it safe. I don't know if you have one of your computer, the, okay, you don't, you don't have the one I sent you of the conceptual of, just so they could see what we're looking at going on?
Yeah, I just put the picture in there.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Any questions?
Before we move into discussion among the Planning Commission members, I'd like to call for a motion and a second from the Commission.
I'll motion to approve the Saldau modification request for six forty South Franklin Street.
I'll second that motion.
Great, thank you. We can now move on to discussion for this project.
Sounds exciting. Affordable housing is needed in our community, construction's also, so the two opportunities sound fantastic. Congratulations.
Could we pull this up on, wow, that's louder than last time. Could we pull this up on a map real quick, just like the location?
So this is on the, the east side of the property. For those of you who are familiar with the property, there's a small driveway, I think it's actually the beginning of an alley of some kind that allows you to drive into the property where they used to, the trucks used to drop off the recycling and garbage. There is a public right-of-way that's unopened that would go through the block there.
Actually, his name's Stevens Street.
Oh, Stevens, thank you, thank you, Stevens Street.
It's just undeveloped.
Yeah. And Mandela, do you mind also going to the zoning map that you have open and navigating to that parcel too? Then they can see the full scope of the property, because it actually encompasses a couple of different parcels at the moment. Six forty South Franklin is the address that's listed for the main parcel, but there are some additional pieces. So at the front, along Chesapeake, there's a large lot that currently is mostly vacant there. The buildings that are being demolished are all in one parcel, that's why this particular address is being listed. The, the smaller property just south of that and to the west of the smaller building is also included in this, as is the next property down. Is that right, Gene? Okay, thank you. So those are all of the properties that Thaddeus Stevens Foundation is looking to redevelop. But tonight, the request is just to demolish the two buildings existing on six forty South Franklin.
And as you saw, the ones falling down as we speak.
Okay, could you, could you detail more about like the safety concerns with the structure as it is?
Well, I think if he goes back to the pictures, you'll be able to see. Look, see how the building's falling down?
In that first image, okay.
Yes, and then if you see how the steel's starting to pour away and the wall's starting to cave in there.
All right, so the structure is pretty much unusable?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would never be usable.
Right.
It would be.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, since this was used by Shell's disposal, is it considered a brown space, or is it safe for human habitation?
From all the studies we have, it is safe.
Okay.
Yes, that, that much was done before we entered a sales agreement to make sure that we didn't run into any surprises. And I will say. Most of what he recycled was glass, plastic, and paper. So there really wasn't anything, or should not have been anything there that would have leaked.
That was hazardous, okay.
We did a bunch of probes prior to the foundation, working with the city to purchase it, and then we've done some probes since to make sure that when we do this, we're in good shape, and then when we go to build, we're okay.
Thank you.
I will add that I did actually read the Phase One report that was done. So because of the activities that took place, they were required to do what's called a Phase One environmental assessment. The, the purpose of that is, at a very broad level, to review the history of the property to determine what, if any, contaminants are on site. And there were some minor issues that were noted in the, in the report, but nothing that warranted what they'd call Phase Two. Phase Two gets much more specific about what contaminants are there and to what level and what the remediation is that needs to be done. In this case, there was no Phase Two suggested, but certainly, you know, some cleanup of barrels and old light bulbs and other things like that. I'm going off of memory here from reading a couple of years ago.
There's a nice pile of glass in there that we have to clean up and get rid of, and some trash inside the building that was left there, so.
Can you, Mister Duncan, could you just describe what state the property will be in after the properties, after these buildings will be demolished? Will you return it to grass?
Yes. Well, you know, we'll, we'll do what we have to do to meet with stormwater retention, so we'll put the cell fence up and things like that while we're demolishing. Then we'll scrape off, and we'll put some topsoil down, and we'll seed, and it'll just turn into a vacant, seeded lot until the fall of twenty-three, twenty-four. Because like, as I said, next year, we'll be on Marshall Street, so the twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll be on Marshall Street, then twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we'll start our first duplex there.
Is it safe to assume that you will be maintaining that open space?
Yeah, we own the building right across the street, the new Griner campus where we have H V A C welding and machine shop, so yes.
Will the lot be secured while it is a vacant lot before development?
I, I see no reason to do that, because it would just be a grass lot. Actually, I think it would look worse if we put a fence up. You know, I think it would, I think it's going to be, be more aesthetic for the neighborhood to just do the grass the way it is.
Uh, I, funny enough, so speaking of aesthetics and grass, sorry.
That's all right.
With all due respect, I know Stevens is reputable, but on the side of caution to the ecosystem, it would be amazing if we could throw seeds down that are instead native plants. Because let's say the project gets delayed by a year, two years, it could provide insect organisms.
So you'd rather have plants than?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even saying it needs to be managed, but.
Mowed manicured lawn?
That's correct. I would prefer that over a mowed manicured lawn. I don't think mowed manicured lawns do much for the ecosystem. It is an aesthetic choice, but I'm thinking more of.
If that's the recommendation of the Commission?
Mister Duncan, with all due respect to Commissioner Dastro, we'll have to coordinate with our codes department as well, because I know that there can be some conflict sometimes between the ecological landscaping and what is actually enforceable under our ordinance. But I'm happy to take that conversation to other staff if you'd like to discuss that. I do appreciate the recommendation.
Keep in mind that that, immediately in front of that building will be the first site that'll be built on. So anything we do within a year, year and a half, will be gone in the first set of duplexes.
How, how large is that space? Big enough to throw a frisbee in?
Oh, yeah.
Kids to play some football?
Yeah, yeah. It's fairly large. It's going to have a community center in it and eight duplexes.
Any further discussion from members of the Commission?
This is more for, a question for us. We are going to see a, because this is before we see a plan, correct?
Yes, this would, the scope of the project, as I understand it right now, if that proceeds, it would require a final land development plan. It would actually require preliminary and final, they may submit to have a combined preliminary and final. But I think it's roughly eight duplex buildings, so duplex means, you know, the two houses are attached, and then there's another pair, and there's another pair. So a total of, I guess, four pairs, four to five, it's four to six, I find out you're still getting your numbers out, yeah.
If it's up to my instructors, it may be one lot less, because they'd like to build a bigger house, because they have so many students, but.
Yeah.
We have to work that out. Right now, it's, I think it's four duplexes, eight houses.
Thank you. And could you just provide some, some brief background on how this transaction was arrived? I know that you were in conversation with the redevelopment authority. I believe the city transferred the property to the redevelopment authority. The redevelopment authority chose you as the applicant for this property, is that correct?
Correct. And, and I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that we've been building houses, or were building, all of our houses that we built were, up until eight years ago, six years ago, were in the city. Then we ran out of property in the city, and we had to move to Lancaster Township. So we've been looking for property to come back into the city, and then this came up. So we thought that would be a great way to bring the houses back into the city and bring in affordable house. And if anyone likes to see what the houses look like, it's basically what Ayers Court looks like off of Walnut Street and Lehigh Avenue, or the nine hundred block of Fulton Street. That's, was our latest houses before we moved out of Lancaster Township.
Thank you.
So there, there is a property next door. Is that property still there, right next door?
What used to be the restaurant? What used to be the restaurant?
I thought there was a home there, a house.
Are you talking on the backside? I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the left-hand side.
Yeah, there's still, there's still, it's here, two or three houses back there, yes.
Okay, okay.
And they're on, they face Skooko Street.
Any other comments from members of Planning Commission? Okay, at this time, we will open up for public comment on this project. Okay. Seeing none, we can now move to a vote. I will call, roll, Commissioner Weeks.
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert?
Aye.
Commissioner Polite?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown?
Aye.
The motion made by Commissioner Sufert and seconded by Commissioner Weeks passes unanimously. Moving on to the next agenda item, the Saldau modification request for eight oh two and eight oh six South Duke Street.
So, Commissioner, this is a project that has some history with the Commission. Mister Lopez will certainly get into that. But these properties are, the former grocery store, is the former grocery store on South Duke Street, which moved to the new Saka Center. But this is really related to the development of Chesapeake North, the affordable homes that are being built there, and the Phase Two construction of that development. So this is the same request as the one we just heard from Thaddeus Stevens Foundation, so I will pass it over to Mister Lopez to elaborate.
Sure, thank you. So what we're proposing is the demolition of the property that was the old Brothers Store that's at eight oh two, eight oh six, South Duke Street. It's part of an overall project that we're going to be bringing forth to, to this body in the future that involves also the Fulton Bank Branch that's on the corner there, which we have an agreement to purchase that property as well. In December, we purchased the Brothers site in anticipation for our, our construction of Phase Two of Conestoga North, which is right there on South Chesapeake. Last year, we completed Phase One, the brand-new townhouse units that we've sold to first-time home buyers at eighty percent of median income or less. Those nine homes that we built there, we sold those homes within a seven-month period. Have a waiting list for the additional nine units that we're going to build in Phase Two. And so what we're trying to do is be able to demolish this building so that we can stage the Phase Two construction of, of Conestoga North without impeding the egress that's for the existing nine units on, on the site. So that, that's why we, we want to demolish this building. This building was a blighted property, which when we acquired the property, we put a fence around it to, to limit access to it. It, at one point, there was someone in the property prior to our ownership that was living in the, in the building. And since then, we've relocated that individual through our organization. We provided assistance for this person to be able to get into proper housing. So I, I can talk a little bit about the, the concept plan that we're going to be bringing forth. It's going to be a mixed-use concept, retail and multifamily for these two sites. The Fulton Bank is, is going to stay there. We're going to build a brand-new Fulton Bank branch on the corner, move it closer to the corner of Chesapeake and South Duke. The bank, we have an agreement to purchase the property as well as a letter of intent, an agreement for a lease, long-term lease, a ten-year lease back to the bank, as well as a ten-year renewal option. Also have an L O I in place with Union Community Care, where they will relocate their pharmacy that's up the street, that they've outgrown that space. And also, they are also going to develop an urgent care facility on the future site here. Yep, so the, the, looking at multifamily, actually workforce housing, not low-income housing. Workforce housing is defined as housing that's above eighty percent of median income or up to one hundred and twenty percent of median income. I think there's a, a need in our community to provide that type of housing. This area of the city here is concentrated with low-income housing, and so we think this will be a good mix to put on the site.
Before we move on to discussion, could we have a motion and a second from Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the Saldau modification request for eight oh two and eight oh six South Duke Street.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of Commission?
Question. You may have mentioned it, and maybe I just didn't hear it, but is the church to the right, is that also included in this?
Now, the, the church to the right is not part of our, our, our project. We are going to improve, but one of the things that we're going to propose and to improve is the access that's in between the church and the property there. There's a little section of the city, there's an, I think it's unimproved, right there where those cars are, are on, is actually a city dead-end street that the sewer actually runs through there. And it runs down through our property at the Conestoga North site, which, which worked on an agreement with the city to provide the access to an easement for the maintenance of the sewer line that runs through there. So we intend on improving the, the little access there so that there could be some potential circular, circulation around the site when we develop our project.
You had noted or mentioned that you are going to use this site as a construction staging site?
Yes.
So one with that, from a visual perspective, how are you going to ensure that the street frontage has an appeal to it or maintains an appeal? Because construction staging can get kind of messy.
So this will be to the rear of the building here, towards the back of the site that is very close to our, our townhouse community development. These, these, these properties are adjoining, so it would be to the back. One of the things that we're going to do after we demolish the building is, is put back proper fill that's going to be compacted at the proper compaction rate that would allow for us to, to develop the site in the future and, and for also the staging that we need to do. And when I say staging, it's, it's for the beginning of the construction, where we, we're, we're putting superior walls into the foundations for the townhouse units. So we would store the, when they get delivered, that's where they would be sitting. And then maybe also when we're doing the framing, some of the framing material that's going to be required for the roofing system on there. And again, the site's going to be fenced in. We've installed a silk fence to protect the runoff that would occur. We already have that in place.
And do you have any ideas of when you would anticipate construction or redevelopment of the site that the property is on?
So I, I anticipate. So I anticipate probably 2023 at some point, that we were, already have, going to be meeting with the staff to talk about our concept plan, to go over what potential issues there might be and get feedback from staff as to how to properly develop the site to meet all the requirements of the land development code. Yep.
Now, can you repeat what's going to happen with the bank again? I didn't quite hear that.
The, the bank? So there's a couple of things that are going to happen. So when we acquire the bank from Fulton Bank, we are then going to stage them a temporary bank branch that's actually going to be on the site, but we're talking about with the demolition site. The bank's going to move to that temporary site in a, in a trailer that the bank's going to provide. We have to provide the, the site for it to be ready for them to do that. So that's all going to be part of our land development plan. A temporary bank branch is going to get put over on that site. And then we're going to demolish this Fulton Bank Branch and then start the construction of a new bank branch for the bank. And then a construction of an additional building that's going to be in between the corner and, and the Brothers site that we're talking about. And so that's how the bank's going to stay there. And then when, once we're completed the construction of the bank, the bank's going to move to its site. The temporary trailer will go away. And then we're going to build the additional building that's going to be on that site.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I'll just make the same comment as I made previously. Where, like, wherever possible, please put native plants down because like those roots are able to permeate deeper. And so, well, let's say we have a hard rain, you know? It's more likely to absorb through the soil. And so being a community that has stormwater concerns, I recognize that we may rip it out in the end, but I would appreciate native plants wherever possible.
Absolutely, whatever we can do to, to do that, big into the stormwater management. As you know, when we developed the property across the street at, at, at Plaza Centro, we invested a significant amount of, of money in that site that, that deals with stormwater management. Actually, we spent over $3.5 million on just site work alone to encapsulate that site, to ensure that, that the runoff was going to be properly made, processed through the retaining pond that's behind the property. And we built a big retaining wall that's bigger than the Great Wall of China, actually. And, and in terms of height. And so, so yeah, so we're cognitive of the issue of runoff and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that stormwater runoff is incredibly important, especially given the slope of the project site and the slope of the Conestoga North, the completed townhouses. I remember when you brought that project to commission, there were, there was a lot of discussion about runoff because of the slope of the, the site. So I'm happy to hear that there's already silk fencing for runoff to secure this site that we're talking about for demolition. Any other comments from members of commission?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions. Mr. Lopez, I'm just looking at the previous plan for Phase One. Well, you actually applied for the whole project, right? But you broke up the construction into two different phases. My, I just want to maybe raise a discussion that we should have in regards to the limits of disturbance. So the building is going to come down. I imagine you'll add some sort of temporary pavement there. Is that right, where the building is currently, so that construction machinery can operate there?
So no, we're going to put fill, compacted fill back that's proper for us to do that. And if we do need to put some gravel on top of that to make sure that, that that's preserved, we'll, we'll do what's necessary to, to make sure there isn't any runoff issue at the site.
Absolutely, so I think we can resolve all of those issues in a staff meeting. We can schedule with stormwater. And I think, you know, we'll have to basically imagine a revised erosion and sediment control plan to make sure that that portion is stabilized and that we have a construction entrance that's designated for, for those driveways off of South Duke Street. And then the, yeah, I think we can get into details at a later date, but I, I don't foresee that really affecting the, the demolition of the building. Just wanted to flag that for future coordination between us. I can follow up with you and sort that out. Between the building demolition and start of construction, what do you imagine that time being? And do you, will you wait to demolish the building until you're going to basically start construction? Or are you eager to take it down because it's a slight influence?
We're eager to, to tear it down. Anticipate starting the construction on the Phase Two unit sometime in April. So we're, we're ready to go. I have contractors lined up and, and, and so, yeah. We're, we're getting ready to, to do that. Little bit, you know, got setback because of the cost of construction went up, so we had to run around and find some additional funds to make the project work out. But we're, we're close to, to getting there. And we've got our financing, our bridge loan financing in place. And, yeah, so we anticipate mid, mid to late April to start a construction. So, yeah, it's, it's, we're, we're kind of want to get eagerly tearing down this building.
Got it, okay, understood. Thank you for that, and, yeah, certainly we can follow up.
Absolutely.
Any other commissioner staff comment for this?
I'll just add that, and I forgot, I didn't mention in the last project, but city staff is recommending both of these for approval, just for clarification.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to public comment for this project. Seeing none, I'll now call for the vote. Commissioner Weeks?
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert?
Aye.
Commissioner Polite?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown?
Aye.
The motion to approve the saldo modification passes unanimously. Thank, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, we will be reviewing proposed zoning text amendments to address housing and wireless communication facilities.
Okay, here's the heart of the meeting. So there's, there's a lot to get through here. Just to mark where we are right now, we began discussion on zoning text amendments on January 19th. We've had, we've actually discussed these at all of the meetings since then. You have in total recommended seven of the amendments for formal adoption by city council. And this has been a bit of an iterative process because as we've discussed, some new issues have emerged. Staff has also done additional research on short-term rentals, which has been added into this, this packet. So tonight, it's, it's my, it's the planning staff's personal desire to get through these amendments this evening if possible and seek a recommendation from the Planning Commission. This would allow us to introduce these to City Council Committee on, on April 4th and proceed with their schedule as desired. So we'll start at the, the top of the packet on Amendment Number Six. This is related to traffic impact studies being a requirement in the zoning code. However, we normally review these in the land development phase where we address issues like position of driveways and investment in streetscape and street widening and other traffic-related improvements. So just to recap, when we discussed this last, Planning Commission had some questions about the exemptions and I think also the complexity of the language. So I did two things here. First is I went to our city engineer, Cindy McCormick, and I verified the language that we had drafted and asked her if she had any concerns from a traffic point of view about eliminating the requirement at the zoning stage. She did not express any concerns about that. She told me that she would support this amendment and didn't feel like it was necessary at the zoning stage to have a full traffic study. I also want to separate out the issue of traffic study from parking study. Our land development code and also zoning code, in most cases, does not require a parking study. The zoning code, in some cases, if you're seeking a variance or reduction of parking or off-site parking, you might have to do a small personal traffic, sorry, parking study. In this case, we're not dealing with any parking issues. We're only dealing with, with traffic. And typically, that's really about the number of vehicles on a stretch of street at any given time and looking at the peak hours and whether lighting, light timing needs to change, et cetera. So all of that said, we've drafted 300-18 and 300-35 to be the exact same section of code so that there aren't any discrepancies. And we have actually removed all of the exemptions that were listed here. And instead, we refer to the subdivision of land development code, which already provides some exemptions. So I'll read this through just for clarity's sake. If the proposed development would generate fifty or more new vehicle trips in the peak direction, inbound or outbound, during the site's peak traffic hour, a traffic study prepared and conducted in accordance with, and then it quotes the land development code, where there are standards that are set, must be submitted at the time of zoning application, unless the development is exempted by the criteria set forth. And, and then it references the zoning code there. It should say, sorry, 265-44, the 300-35 should be eliminated. That's a typo, my apologies. Colon, however, developments, expansions, or changes in use that require the submission of a land development plan are exempt from this zoning requirement. So that's the exemption because we deal with these traffic studies in the land development planning phase. So essentially, if a land development plan is required, you're going to submit a land development plan, but you don't need to do it at the time of zoning. And furthermore, there are some sections of the land development code that actually exempt traffic studies, like the downtown. So I hope I, I tried my best to explain that cleanly. And I've literally just copied and pasted the same paragraph into Section 300-35. And just as a reminder, 300-18 deals with, I think it's the, the use table, sorry? Oh, yes, the bulk size regulations, so height, massing of the building. The next section, 300-35, addresses the use table. So it's a little funny, it basically saying that, you know, if there's a zoning application for anything that's dimensional, it could require a traffic study in certain instances. And if there's any changes in use or new uses, then those also might require a traffic study. So that's why it appears in two different places in the zoning code. This is very wonky, and I apologize. Happy to answer any questions about that one.
The only question I have is, are the exemptions you had mentioned referenced in the other sections the same as what's crossed out below?
I can verify that for you, just one moment. So if it generates less than fifty vehicle trips, then it's not, it's exempt. If it is within the area bounded by, and this is more or less the downtown area, James Street, East Lime, Church Street, South Conestoga Street, North Water Street, West Strawberry, and Charlotte, then it's exempt.
Those were, well, feel free to continue.
Those are the only two exemptions, actually. So the exemptions that were listed have been eliminated. And the reasoning there is because all of the things that were listed would have required a land development plan. There's no way we would have had a seventy-four-unit development to come in that didn't require a land development plan. And if a land development plan's required, a traffic study is required. So it just seemed kind of silly to say seventy-five or less units would be exempt potentially because it would be in conflict with how we administer the land development. The same goes for the commercial space that's listed there. So I think that this is a vastly simpler lang, like, paragraph, and I understand it a lot better. I hope other people understand it a lot better. It was complicated before. And if, if there aren't any other questions, we can move on to the next one. We don't, we can circle back around to these if, if you'd like. So the next one is Amendment Nine, because seven and eight were recommended for adoption last time. So Amendment Nine, we get into the short-term rental regulations. So what we're recommending here is that short-term rentals, currently known as visitor house rentals in our ordinance, be renamed short-term rentals and that they, from going forward, be excluded in the R3 and R4 district. So I'm showing the use table as it's currently proposed. I want to note that this table was incorrectly shown at the last meeting, and I accidentally marked C3 and CM as zones where visitor house rentals are allowed, and that is not the case. So just, I apologize for that error. Just wanted to draw your attention to it in case you notice the differences between this memo and the last one.
I know that we had discussed it at the last meeting, but short-term rentals or visitor house rentals that are currently operating in R3 and R4 districts that aren't technically legal, currently don't have rental license, would they still be allowed to operate? Would they be grandfathered in? Or because they're currently operating illegally, would they not be grandfathered?
It's my understanding at this moment, and this is, I think, deserves more discussion with the administration, that if they're not currently in compliance and this ordinance is adopted, they would no longer have the opportunity to be compliant with the old ordinance. So if there is a short-term rental that is in, that is, maybe hasn't gotten its rental license yet and it's operating in the R3 or R4 district, and then this is adopted, they would not have the opportunity to go back and say, you know, oh, well, I didn't, I didn't know. Well, the law has changed at this point. That is, that is my current understanding. We're not aware of what that number might be. But for those who missed the last Planning Commission meeting, the city has contracted with Granicus, and they're a software company that develops a database, address-identified database of all the short-term rentals operating in the city. They scrape about a hundred different websites to develop this list. And then they give us those addresses and they track the bookings of all of them. And they provide us that information so that we can ensure compliance with our ordinances.
I think that's great to hear. I would be very interested to know how many are out of compliance in those two districts.
I look forward to sharing that information with you. Right now, Granicus estimates that there's 197 unique rentals operating in the city. Some of these are cross-listed on websites. There's about 300 when you look at all of the listings together within the city. I also submitted a right-to-know request to the county. And they gave me a database of, of the rentals that they have, short-term rentals that they have registered. And the, it increased from, I forget the exact numbers here, but roughly eighteen to low forty, so forty-five or so. It more than doubled in the three years since I requested that last time. We've also put together a database of city-known short-term rentals, which right now comes to forty-two. So we know that there is a huge gap between what we are aware of and what is operating. out there. We would really like to get a better grasp of these units and where they are and to better enforce. As, as you know, it's hard, it's hard to track down the address without booking the unit. So a service like this really becomes invaluable.
Thank you for that context and very thorough answer.
Are there any thoughts to cap the amount, like, I'm thinking of capacity here, so in a particular area that we are going to allow short-term rentals? Is there a way to have a number? Or I don't know if there's like an equation that can be?
I think we discussed this at the last meeting, and it's hard to legislate the number of, or the density of these short-term rentals in a specific area because of how litigious the, the larger companies or platforms for the short-term rentals are. It's been issues in other larger cities where they've tried to regulate the density of short-term rentals in specific areas, and they've been challenged in court.
Yeah, that's a good answer. And I suspect that this is our first pass at this. And after we get Granicus up and running, we may, as a commission, we may all want to review that information. We can set up a presentation and then figure out whether we need to do anything more, you know, in terms of density. Because your question is, is a good one. There's honestly just more research that we need to do. You know, you can cite stuff within certain distances, like for instance, liquor store for certain distance of a school. That's sort of a classic example. Or there was a situation with gun sales and the distance of a school out on near Dillardville several years ago. So there can be zoning issues like that, where there's certain regulations that are permitted for us to use. But saying that only one can exist on a block, per se, using that as a metric, my understanding is that, that would be questionable. But this is something that I definitely want to look into further, and we can, you know, this doesn't have to be the only pass that we take at this.
All right. I'm happy to hear that because that's where my nerves are, is this is an evolving subject, and I feel like we don't have all the information that is necessary to make, I feel like we're making informed decisions, but I feel like with more information, we could make even better decisions, so.
And if, at some point in this discussion, you want to see the map that we have put together from the county, I can share that with you. It's a very incomplete map. I haven't yet mapped the city properties that we're aware of. But I have mapped the counties, and, and I have an image from Granicus that I can show too, but it's not, you know, they don't want to show you all of the detail until you buy the service. So it's, it doesn't have the best resolution to it, but can certainly pull those up if needed.
Could we actually pull up a zoning map real quick as well?
Sure.
Oh, wonderful. I see.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll pull it up in a minute. Mr. Kajjo is helping with that. So I haven't figured out the exact land area that R3 and R4 takes up, but you can see the light yellow and the, the orange really is the majority of the city neighborhoods.
Right.
So these would be permitted in the central business districts, which are in pink in the middle, and the mixed-use district, which is in brown, and a couple of the very small commercial districts that are in the residential areas, like, that are pink and purple, C1 and C2. And this is where they're currently permitted in all of those districts.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, I noticed that in the next amendment, we took out some language. But I think, given the fact that we, like, I'm going to keep reiterating that we have a vested interest in the success of the convention center downtown and their profitability, I think we should be more aggressive and not permit these in the downtown area as well. It, it's concerning for me just because until, you know, we have years to go for the agreement to pass by with the convention center. But I would much rather not see that occur because I know there are structures downtown that are not completely used, all the floors, yet. And I'd much rather see more permanent residents take occupancy there than there be an influx of rentals then created in the downtown area to encourage use of the convention center hotel. I'd much rather work out something where, much like we have these homestays in Amendment 10, I see we've taken out occupied by, or rather, a permanent long-term resident who owns or leases the unit. I'd much rather see a situation created where, kind of that business model maybe that I was mentioning in our last meeting, where the property owners downtown who may not necessarily live there are able to work out an agreement with their long-term tenants that they do manage. I suppose we could create other language than a homestay, but a situation where, okay, they can potentially use it for short-term rentals, but it would be defined differently to encourage more long-term residents in the downtown area.
Could we quickly pull up Amendment Number 10, which Commissioner Dastre was referencing?
Yes. And I just want to clarify that short-term rentals do have to be in single-family structures, and the downtown area has a very limited number of single-family structures. It is a commercial district too, so, you know, we, we really see short-term rentals as being a commercial use, belonging more in a commercial area of the city rather than a neighborhood that, you know, people are looking for parking with their family, coming home at the end of work, and then there's 20 cars because of a short-term rental, where there's parking garages downtown, and there's not as much, you know, a single-family home. It seems, it seems reasonable to relegate them to more commercial areas of the city. So Amendment Number 10, let me just refresh my memory here. Okay, this is the homestay definition. So what we're doing here is we're separating out short-term rentals, which have to exist in single-family structures, from the situation where someone wants to rent their bedroom on Airbnb. We're calling this a homestay. Previously, the zoning ordinance did not comment on these, on this situation. It was essentially ignored. So what we're doing in this set of amendments is trying to create some standards around having what we're calling a homestay. This is a term that we got from Gettysburg Boroughs zoning amendment on short-term rentals. So a single-family dwelling unit where in a maximum of two bedrooms are rented on a short-term basis, and where the dwelling unit is concurrently occupied by a property owner. So I've included my amendments to this because we've had some discussion among staff about opening a bit of Pandora's box here, where you can have a multifamily structure, say it has 50 units in it, and everyone can have a short-term rental in it, right, or a homestay. And then there's additional, you're basically doubling the parking requirement for the structure. It just, it can cascade into a number of different problems. So we put single-family dwelling unit in here. That really clarifies the type of structure it can exist in. And we also added that it must be occupied by a property owner rather than just a long-term renter.
What was that logic behind a property owner versus just a long-term rental, or a long-term tenant?
It was to, it was to exclude it from damaging the rental market, essentially. And that, that would really open up the number of buildings where a homestay would be possible. So the short-term rental is required to be, well, not occupied by a homeowner, right, at all. Can't be living there. The homestay, it seems that the intent of that really is to have a person living there. So that was the thinking. It was to, kind of, it helps to limit it. It ensures that it's going to be better maintained by the person who's living there, and that we're really benefiting residents of the city who are living here as, and investing in the community, as opposed to a rental where there may be a little bit, maybe more difficult to enforce with, say, an investment company that's managing the property.
I also think the, the term "long-term renter" is a little bit nebulous. We would have to add a definition for that. Is it someone who has a one-year lease, but they've been renewing it for 10 years? Or is it someone who has an agreement but may not have, you know, an actual lease document?
Douglas, in Amendment 10, you define short-term rentals as single-family structures. In Amendment Nine, that definition doesn't exist. So should that be stated in Amendment Nine? Or is Amendment Nine allowing short-term rentals in multifamily?
So the short-term rental also has to be in a single-family structure. Later on in this packet, you'll, actually Amendment 14, if you want to flip there, and Mr. Kajjo, if you could also do so. Here, the only change is the change in language from visitor house rental to short-term rental, but the definition remains one, one per dwelling, except that, oh, I'm sorry, hang on a moment. That's the parking requirement. Go to Amendment 13, right above that. So a short-term rental, a fully furnished, single-family home that is rented on a short-term basis, et cetera. So the definition there hasn't changed. The short, the single-family dwelling part is listed in the, the definition for STR.
So I guess I just want to clarify then, in the downtown area, let's, not to bring any specific properties into example, let's just use a, a general property that, let's say, the first floor commercial is being utilized and the second, fourth floors are not, would they be able to create short-term rentals in there at all legally?
I do not believe so. To just be sure that I'm not leading you astray, I'm going to just quickly reference the definition of "single-family home," but I don't believe that that would meet the definition. A building designed for the use, is designed for and used as a residence for one family. And then there's various definitions because there's attached, detached, semi-detached, but all of them begin with a building designed for and used as a residence for one family. So it's always been our interpretation that if there's commercial on the first floor and there's a unit above, that would actually meet the definition of apartment, as we have it defined in our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Apartment, we have a very narrow definition. It's basically, it's one to two units above a commercial space, period. If there's more than that, it becomes really a multifamily structure.
So short answer, no.
Short answer is no.
Okay, great, great, great. This is actually nothing we have written in here, but I'd love to bring it forward for future consideration. I guess it might have to be a separate, it might have to be a separate amendment, potentially. You know, there's a lot of individuals who, for example, live in mobile structures, and I know that we don't want to turn necessarily, like, you know, we don't RVs randomly on the street. It would be amazing if we could figure out a plan for, like, let's say you have a large amount of parking or a parking pad, and you don't utilize it as a homeowner. It would be amazing if we could figure out a way that those pads, that maybe they do have, like, you know, the tiny home vehicles on them, that those could also be utilized legally and authentically for short-term rentals. Because it, just incorporates, or even just that someone could rent their pad out for someone to park on it legally.
I'm happy to discuss those with you further. Maybe we can meet in person to, to talk about that.
Word.
If there aren't any other questions, I'll keep chugging along here, but please chime in. So Amendment 11 builds on 10. So 10 establishes the definition of homestay. 11 sets the districts in which they can operate. We've maintained the same districts where currently short-term rentals can operate. So that includes R3 and R4, and then the same districts as short-term rentals are proposed to operate in RO, MU, CB1, CB, C1, C2. So homestays, I didn't, because this is a new concept, I suppose I took the conservative approach, and I just stuck with the districts where we're currently permitting short-term rentals, and then narrowed the short-term rental districts. Yeah. Any questions or comments on that?
I actually really like that we have this homestay aspect here because I think that to invite somebody into your home, and, you know, I'm thinking from like a homebuyer perspective, like to have somebody visit your community, and you as a resident, as a property owner, that are introducing somebody to your hometown, I guess I understand the conservative approach, but is there any hesitation from the rest of the commission about allowing R1 and R2 zones to permit that sort of homestay? Because we have put restrictions in on the volume, like the amount of bedrooms, for a reason as well.
Could we just see the zoning map again? I know that R3 and R4 are the block of our residential zones, but it might be nice to see.
So R1, Mr. Kajjo, if you could navigate to the far east, southeast corner of the city. Yeah, on the other side of Sunnyside, keep going a little further east. Yeah, there's the Conestoga Gardens neighborhood. That is an example of a, of an R1, yeah, R1 detached neighborhood. There aren't that many R2, but across the river on Sunnyside, if you click on the Sunnyside district here, can you just verify for me that that's R2? Yeah, oh, sorry, that's R3. There are so, very few, yeah, the cemetery is R2. I don't know why, but the cemetery is R2, low-density burials. So we don't have too many R1 and R2 districts in the city, honestly. There, there are actually very few.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to allowing homestays in R1 and R2, especially since there is the limitation that they must be single-family owner-occupied structures.
Any other commission thoughts on that?
One other. We just had Matt Johnson from Church World Services come to our neighborhood committee meeting two months ago, and he was asking neighbors if they would house refugees. So would that be a special exemption?
That's a good question.
Not trouble.
Yeah, no, 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 not at all.
Use for, um, he didn't say, I think it was hosting either.
Yeah, because, I don't know. My interpretation of homestay is that it is a rental use, because otherwise, if you're having friends or family visit from town to and hosting them in your home, that would also be a homestay.
Yeah.
Adding language around that aspect of it to clarify.
Let's see, sorry, I'm just thinking on the fly here. That's a great question. My, what I'm thinking, I'm trying to just find text to support, is, you know, having someone stay at your place for free is different than marketing and providing some sort of contractual agreement and taking money for it. So I think it would depend on the conditions. You know, if Church World Service was, was paying a resident for, to house them for less than 30 days, then that, that probably would fall under the homestay category. If they were just asking to house them temporarily, and there was no contractual agreement, and they were a homeowner, I don't think they'd be violating anything. If they were a rental, it just, you'd have to look at the rental agreement that they signed and how long people can stay as guests, but that's outside the bounds of the zoning code. But you, you also just got me thinking about whether we should clarify the contract or exchange of money in the definition. I might have to come back to that because I'm looking at the short-term rental definition, and it says, "Guests have use of the facilities as provided for in any contract or agreement with the owner or management company." So there's at least a contract that's mentioned there. Let me just put a pin in that, and I'll keep thinking through that as we get through the rest of the amendments. There might be something hiding in here I'm not thinking of. But I think you're right, we want to differentiate, you know, between these situations clearly. Any other? Any other thoughts on the expansion? I mean, just a first thought here, I don't think that, you know, I take any issue with that. So, okay, we can, we can keep going, but potentially...
Douglas, I'm sorry. I just want to say, you know, I'm not totally, the R1, R2 neighborhood fabric, I think, may not be conducive to this type of housing, is part of my initial thought, or the short-term rental aspect of it. But then I also think, you know, that it could benefit the homeowners down there, so I'm like Wayne, so I just want to share my thoughts.
Why don't you think it would be conducive, just because they're lower-density neighborhoods? Or what's the...
When I think of people, it's outside of the area, it's a lot of families, it's not so much a, they're more stabilized communities based off of the individuals that are living there, whereas in the other districts that we allow this to happen, there's a little bit more of, I'll say, visitor traffic. It's just my initial thoughts.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Soufer. We can, we can circle back around to that before we close out here, and... Yeah, we may, we may want to discuss that one a little bit more. I would say if there, you know, is a clear majority who are interested in making that change, you know, the commission could consider doing that. If, you know, if there are strong feelings about it, we may want to wait and then reevaluate that, and we can take a closer look at the data. So, Amendment 12, this is the amendment that sets conditions for the permit, the permits of homestays. So far, we've established the definition, we've established the districts that they can operate in. Now, we get into the specifics of how you can do that. So, I borrowed many of these conditions from how we're currently regulating short-term rentals, and some of these are also new. So, 9A, the homeowner shall serve as the sole property manager and provide contact information to the city's housing unit. So, this is an existing condition that we have for short-term rentals. B, the property owner must be residing in the dwelling unit for the duration of the rental. This is a new one, because it's unique to the homeowners being on, being, that's the sort of the sole purpose of a homestay, right, is that the property owner is there. C, the maximum length of stay per registered party shall not exceed 30 consecutive days. That's a holdover from the short-term rental as well, definition. D, the number of guests in one party shall not exceed two adults per bedroom. That's also a holdover from the short-term rental conditions. E, no exterior or interior sign intended to be seen by the public shall be permitted. This is another holdover condition. F is a new one, guests must have use of a bathroom and kitchen for the duration of the rental. I know that that seems kind of like common sense, but you'd be surprised. We had a zoning appeal just a couple of months ago where that was not going to be the condition. If you rent a room and you don't have access to a full kitchen and bathroom, this is a different kind of housing. This is not short-term rental. We're getting into, in my opinion, substandard housing, some sort of rooming unit at best, but we want to make sure that that is a condition. G is, structures with only two bedrooms may only dedicate one bedroom as a homestay. So, this is getting at the conversation we had last time about there being a certain number, that structures differ in the number of bedrooms that they have, and we should regulate the number of homestays relative to the number of bedrooms in the unit. So, in this condition, if you have two bedrooms, you're living in one, and you can potentially have a guest stay in the other. If you have three bedrooms, then you can live in one, and two other guests can live in the homestay. If you have four bedrooms, the conditions don't change. You can only still have a maximum of two homestays in the house. This is to also discourage from people chopping up houses to add, you know, three, four bedrooms and a basement unit, et cetera, to basically develop a mini-hotel where the homeowner's living in it. So, those are the, those are all the conditions that are currently proposed for homestays.
So, I might have a proposal, so in light of some of these restrictions, which I think as put are very great, and it wouldn't be a change to these, it'd be an addition, additional restriction. Commissioner Soufer, could you, could you reiterate some of your concerns with allowing homestays in R1 and R2?
I'd be happy to. My, I mean, my thoughts there are just that those particular communities, I feel, are more family-oriented in nature, and that I believe that Airbnbs bring a lot of economic value to, to our region, it's a big, it's a tourist attraction. I use them almost everywhere that I travel, so I don't, I'm supportive of the thought of this. But when you think about those types of, you know, amenities in the R1 and R2 district, I just feel like those places are a little bit more sacred to the values of family, and I'd just like to be respectful of that.
So, how would you, I don't know if this would have to be like item D, Article 1, or whatever, but I don't know how we list these in the code, but how would you feel about in R1 and R2 zones, it can only be two adults regardless of the number of bedrooms, but potentially like, you know, the other bedroom could have their children, for example? Like, so that could be a more family-oriented rental in R1, R1 and R2 zones, instead of just letting a ramp in, and in the same regard as we're letting in the other zones? Would that be more suitable for you?
I just feel like that would be impossible to regulate and, and manage that process and ensure that they're abiding by those guidelines. I feel like if you open the doors, the floodgates are there, and it will allow for everything, really to, it would just be the same as everywhere else, so. I mean, I think there's definite pros to it, having it in R1 and R2, but the bottom of my stomach says that there's a family component to that that should be valued.
So, um... Okay.
Okay, some of these conditions would be regulated through Granicus, where we can track the number of people that are booking a unit, match that with the number of bedrooms, et cetera. I just, I want to stress that this is one piece of what we'll need to do to appropriately regulate and track these. There's another component that will need to happen with the rental ordinance, in terms of issuing, revoking licenses appropriately, setting the fees so that they're representative of potential nuisances on-site, increased inspections because it's essentially operating as a mini-hotel, et cetera. Those matters are in discussion, you know, all of these things take time. So, I suspect that, you know, later in the year, we'll, we'll be having, I'll be providing an update to you about other angles to this matter.
So, Douglas, or Mr. Smith, oh, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Agent Smith.
Agent Smith?
Kidding, for your Matrix fans out there.
When, when we're looking at how these listings are put forward, can, will it say, like, for example, if you have two bedrooms and you're, would it say you could have four people in it then? Like, is that how you view it as well?
That's the math that's in here currently. If there are two bedrooms that are operating as homestays, if you have a three-bedroom unit, you're living in one, then you'd be permitted to have two adults in each of the bedrooms.
And like, but I'm asking like, in the, in the figures that you're shown from Granicus, are those people just adults listed then? Like, it's, like this listing's seeking for adults?
I see, yeah, it's, you know, I don't yet know the answer to that. I think that when you register for Airbnbs, you, you list the number of people, number of adults and children, if I remember correctly. Now, of course, you could mislead the person that you're booking with, that wouldn't be advisable. So, we will track based on what's submitted through those platforms for rentals. We haven't gotten into discussions about whether there would be, you know, onsite drop-in inspections or things like that. We would have to go on the information submitted right now.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate all the questions. You know, this is, this is going to be a learning curve for all of us too, as we implement the software and, you know, hopefully, new regulations as well. So, Amendment 13, I already touched on this one, but essentially, we're just changing the title from visitor house rental to short-term rental. We have heard from our zoning officer, Jamil Thrash, that people will call him up and say, "I can't find any of your short-term rental regulations in the zoning ordinance," and this is a problem, and it's because we use an unusual term, visitor house rental. So, we're looking to align our language in the zoning ordinance with common vocabulary on this issue, so that people can more easily find and navigate the appropriate regulations. We're not recommending any change to that definition. So, Amendment 14, okay, this is parking requirements for what is now known as visitor house rentals, but soon to be, hopefully, short-term rentals. We're recommending two changes here. Let me actually read through this explanation. So, this amendment recommends changing the language also within the parking requirement section. Furthermore, Lancaster City has the lowest parking requirement out of all of the following municipalities. Lidditz requires one per short-term rental, or one per every two people, whichever's greater. Columbia Borough requires two per, two spaces per unit. Gettysburg Borough requires one per unit. Lehigh Township requires one bedroom, one per bedroom, and one per two-day guests. Currently, we are only requiring one space per dwelling, so it doesn't, regardless of the number of bedrooms, up to four bedrooms, up till three bedrooms. So, if you have four or more bedrooms, then you have to provide one additional space. What we're recommending here is that we have one per dwelling, except with four or more bedrooms, shall provide one per bedroom. So, if you come to the city with a five-bedroom unit, you're providing one space for the one through three. That's typically grandfathered in, so a lot of single-family homes don't actually have to provide any space at all, which is a problem in its own right. But if you want to have a four-unit, then you have to provide one on-space parking space, and if you have a five-unit, one more on-space and up from there. So, this, I think, gets to the parking issue in, in part with short-term rentals.
What happens if a five-bedroom house can't provide that much parking? Is, are they just declined their application?
Yes, they would be. If they can't provide the onsite parking, they'd have to get a zoning variance for that, but we would, we would not be able to issue that by right. And if they couldn't get the zoning variance, then they would not be able to convert that unit to a short-term rental. Now, what they could do, potentially, I mean, trying to think creative, like a short-term rental developer, you could turn the extra two bedrooms into living room space, you know, not, not run them as bedrooms. I suppose someone could attempt to do something like that. I don't think that would be an issue with the zoning code. Now, if they were actually using it as a five-bedroom unit and they were booking that, we would be able to tell the bookings, hopefully, through Granicus. If they were having people show up and crash there, it would really become an issue we'd have to respond to in the moment if we got a violation, or a call from a neighbor saying that there was a disturbance or a lot of people there, then we would be able to go over and deal with that issue. And that's where we get into the rental enforcement, where their license could potentially be taken away, and that's why I mentioned that part needs to be strengthened, yeah. The, I'm curious what you think about this parking requirement. You know, if you have three, three bedrooms as a short-term rental, you could have six adults staying there, and there would not be any required parking on-site. This is the current state of things, so I was on the fence about whether this should be changed or not, whether we should become more restrictive. There are a couple of ways that this could be approached. You can regulate parking based on number of people, but I think that becomes hard, because you don't know how many people stay there with any given rental. Or you just regulate based on bedrooms and assume that, you know, if you get a two-unit, two-bedroom, short-term rental, at best you have one adult and one child staying there. But worst-case scenario, in terms of parking, you have four adults staying there. So, it's really hard to know how, you know, to find the right balance with the parking issue and the number of bedrooms. So, I didn't go any lower than what we currently have. I didn't regulate one, two, or three bedrooms beyond what they currently are. But I think here, I was really feeling strongly, when we got to four bedrooms, that we needed to have one parking space at least per bedroom. I'm open to comments from the commission on this.
Are you considering exceptions for those short-term rentals that are within the downtown district, you know, maybe the, the center of the business district area because of the parking garages?
Yeah, that, that was the thinking. I mean, in a more commercial area, there would hopefully be more available parking. Certainly, the parking garages provide opportunity. If they're in the downtown, the central business districts, parking requirements are exempt. So, it would really be in the mixed-use district where we would, they would have to provide onsite parking, or the RO district, or the C1 or C2.
This might be far beyond what we're capable of doing, but, you know, I will not lie, sometimes when people who have not been to Lancaster drive through Lancaster, I get a little freaked out. I have seen a car come the wrong way down Queen Street to the center of town, and then take the, the turn the wrong way down King, and then spin around and look at me and roll down the window and be like, "Sorry, I'm new here, I don't know what I'm doing." Is there any way we can regulate this to the extent that, like, to encourage public transit usage? I know that we still need to support that system, but this could potentially provide influx of monies to that system as well by encouraging that use?
I appreciate the creative thinking. It's a little outside the box. We, when we set fees, we set them based on the cost of administering, so we can't profit from that. If it costs us $500 to administer a license, we have to charge a fee of $500. So, shifting money from one account to another, it doesn't make sense in that environment. What we really need is a, is a better, stronger transit agency, we need more municipalities that are willing to invest in that infrastructure, there's a whole conversation there. But I would say most people who come to visit a community and use a short-term rental, and this is how I have used them in the past, is I like to be walking around and experiencing, you know, the city, finding, you know, a place to stay that's in a, you know, a nice district or neighborhood or something where you can experience the culture, and, yeah. Any other thoughts on the parking matter?
No, I, I think that one, one per dwelling and then adding based on the number of bedrooms is appropriate, especially given that, you know, if it's a three-bedroom unit, you may only have five adults, and if they're conscious of their carbon footprint, maybe they all carpool, but once you get up to four bedrooms and you have potentially eight adults, there's not really a vehicle that can accommodate them, even if they try and carpool. So, I think it makes sense to add one additional space, starting with four bedrooms.
Thank you. I will say one other, I'm just remembering now my, my, my process here. I will say one other, I'm just remembering now my process here. You might remember the non-family unit. A non-family unit requires one space for three adults or three bedrooms, basically. If you get beyond that, it requires one more space. So that's how these regulations were initially written. They mirrored that non-family unit where you can have three unrelated people living together, assuming they're all driving their own cars. So that's where this originally came from. But yeah, I think with short-term rentals, you potentially, you really need those additional spaces, I think. So, okay. Well, we can move on to number 15. We can come back to any of these that you want. Just reminding myself, okay, so this is the parking requirement for home stays. Oh, and this is where I provide that justification, actually. So a single home stay bedroom may not create parking impacts beyond a single-family home occupied by two adults. However, a home stay bedroom may bring an additional car. A non-family unit allows more than three unrelated people live together and requires two parking spaces. So it's recommended that a zoning amendment for home stays follow this logic and require one additional parking space for two home stay bedrooms. So if you have one bedroom you live in and you rent out one as a home stay, there wouldn't be any requirement to add parking, but if you have two bedrooms, there would be a requirement for that. And that tracks with the non-family unit. Okay, well, before we dive into the last one, which is a whole nother can of worms that I'm going to try to break down for you, that's the wireless amendments, which I, they're really no fun to discuss, but it's important stuff. Are there comments on, further comments or thoughts on these amendments? Do we want to go back for additional discussion on any of them? Interested in just your, you know, your general comfort level on potentially moving forward with these as a first step?
I was taking notes as we were discussing, and I just want to make sure that I am accurate in my notes, but I don't think that there were any comments to change Amendment number six about the traffic impact study. I don't think there was a change for Amendment number nine or 10, but I'm not 100% confident. And then I think Amendment number 13, 14, and 15 were also amenable. I just want to make sure that we have it in order before a motion.
Yeah, thank you. So Amendment six, I have crossed out the reference to 300-35, which is just an error.
Yep.
So we can, if a motion were to be made, and just want to keep in mind too, the opportunity for the public to comment too, if anyone would like to. Motion, a second only allows for additional conversation. So that is crossed out in Amendment six. I would recommend that that be noted in a motion. Amendment number nine, I didn't have any changes written down for. I think the only other one we discussed, oh, so Amendment 10, I was mulling over whether we needed mention of a contract of some kind, but I think that saying rented is probably sufficient, you know? In order for it to be rented, there has to be some kind of agreement. Amendment 11.
So then be included in number 12 if we did need additional language around home stay contract, because that's the amendment that lays out what exactly the criteria for a home stay unit is?
Sorry, say that one more time?
Instead of including, if we do need language around contracting for a home stay unit, instead of adding that to Amendment number 10, could it be added in Amendment number 12, because that is the amendment in which the criteria for a home stay unit is defined?
Yeah, I'm just reviewing that right now.
Or would it be more appropriate to have it in the definition of home stay?
It could be amended to say maximum of two bedrooms are rented by contract on a short-term basis. You know, generally when you, at least book through platforms, there's a contract built in, but it could be, that would clear up any sort of informal stays that Ms. Ortega-Brown was mentioning. How does that sound? So Amendment 10 could be amended to say rented by contract.
What type of contract? Is this verbal contract or paper, black and white contract?
Well, we could add by written contract. If we do that, I would suggest that we do the same for short-term rental definition and say that is rented by written contract. We could use the same language, because that's currently not in that definition either. Okay, those were the only outstanding, oh, I'm sorry, the other one was just Amendment 11. I don't know if there's any unresolved discussion about the districts.
I thought the R1, R2 discussion, but there's no strong feeling on commission about adding them.
Okay. I'd say if there's no strong feeling, then maybe we forego it for now. That's just my recommendation.
No, I have a strong feeling. I understand the sentiment. I just think it's, I think it's counterintuitive because these are the, these are the areas where we expect larger families to purchase homes. The dynamic, and it's because I understand the sentiment that I think we need to figure out a solution for that, is because there will be people who potentially view our city and want to purchase in those less dense areas. And if we have to put in extra exclusion to ensure that the state of that dynamic, that's understandable. I feel like we have the monitoring capability through some of these services to ensure that. And even furthermore, if we want to maximize that by potentially putting in parking regulations around R1 and R2 zones as well, like, I do feel like we have the potential here to ensure that R1 and R2 stays state of that family dynamic, because some people just want to purchase homes in R1 and R2 zones, like, based off how they've been designed and the appeal of them. I feel, I feel we should continue that and find a way to permit that.
I agree with Tony that I think it would make sense to allow it in all residential zones, but I also understand what Commissioner Sufert is saying, that with, it may not potentially fit the, this way that those neighborhoods currently operate, but I would be, for the sake of the timeline that is laid out, I would be willing to potentially move this on to council, but I would be interested in exploring it farther and maybe having a listening session for current homeowner occupants of the R1 and R2 districts, because they are fairly small compared to the other residential districts, just to see what the sentiment is for people actually living there, how they would feel.
I love that idea.
Not to make more work for city staff.
I'm open to that. Again, I think this is, we should keep this an open discussion over the next couple of months, you know, especially once I get, well, I'll certainly give you updates from council about how this goes. We will get a recommendation from Lancaster County Planning Commission too on this, and I can report back on those. And then if adopted and we begin implementing this, I'll be sure to keep in close touch with you about how things are going, because we honestly may need to adjust things along the way.
So I think that's all of the amendments up to number 16 covered.
Okay. So I'll try to make this simple here. I would recommend the commission consider making a motion on all of the amendments except for the last one, which is 16, is a totally different topic. And a motion could be made to amend 300, Amendment six, as I recommended, and Amendment 10 and 13, as I recommended. And just to clarify, I'm deleting a section that's referenced in Amendment six that's extraneous, and we're adding by written contract into the definitions for home stay and short-term rental.
Just one point of clarification. So if we see Amendments six through 15 with one motion, should we then open for discussion to the public about those specific amendments?
Yes. Thank you for catching up.
So I'll now call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments, the proposed zoning text amendments by city Can I do them all at one shot?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
So motion, I'll move to approve, as discussed, Amendments number six, number nine, number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, specifically noting that Amendment number six is approved as recommended with the removal of the 300-35. Amendment number 10 also is amended as recommended with the inclusion of the contractual language.
And number 13 as well?
And Amendment number 13 is approved as recommended by city staff.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sufert. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Polite. At this time, I'll open it up for other planning commission discussion. I know that we've had pretty thorough discussion, but is there anything that commission members want to add before we open for public comment? Okay, seeing no comment at this time, we invite members of the public to come up for public comment. Again, please introduce yourself by name and city block and try to keep comment to three minutes or under. You can approach the podium. Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I think there might be a button at the base of the microphone that you might need to press. Do you see a button at the base of the microphone?
I think so, yes. How's this?
Perfect. Thank you.
The last time that I was here, I shattered your three-minute warning by twice. That may be a record. I apologize for that. I would like to ask one question to just square myself away. My understanding now is that STRs are not permitted in three and four, but homestyle home is.
That would be correct. That's the proposed amendment, yes.
That's new. That's a very new one. This afternoon, I delivered a sheet with four of our recommendations to Doug, and I'm not sure whether you got that. We gave it a lot of thought, and with the amendments and so forth that you've discussed, some of these may be valid now and some may not. I do have a copy of it, and I think I have enough for all of you if you want them. I will leave that with you. There's one thing that I thought about when I was listening to you, and this is a suggestion, but we've discovered that in addition to bedrooms, a lot, a number of these operators are adding beds, and the number of beds is totally up to the owner's imagination. And that doesn't show up in the zoning, but it shows up in their advertising, where you, where you may have, you may have three bedrooms, two adults per bedroom, which is six, of course, but then you can have two, three, or in some cases even more beds scattered around the house. And so when they have, when they run their ads, they are using figures that are way off the zoning figures that you're talking about here. We tried to cover the things that we thought were pertinent, and as you read through this, which you probably don't want to do now, one of the, one of the big things that we wanted to emphasize was the commercial zoning for the STRs. I'm not sure how that plays in with the new amendments, but commercial zoning can serve to offer a number of restrictions, right in line with what you're talking about, that you don't have now. And so we would like to have you consider that. Look at these other four things. The question has been answered, and I think the, what we would like to leave, that I'm out? I'm out again.
You can finish your comment.
Thank you. We would just like to say that in this process, if we can offer any assistance, we're kind of the, from the outside coming in, and our experiences may be different from yours, as I just mentioned on the beds. Call us. We would be more than happy to come in, testify, listen, suggest, see what we can do, and use us if you can. Okay? Thank you very much. How did I do? Three minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Puffer.
And I'll just add that you and your neighbors and others that we've talked to have been very helpful already, so thank you for being in contact with us.
Thank you very much.
I will add, if I may, to that and just say, I thought a lot about whether we should limit the number of people or bedrooms in a structure. For this very reason, it becomes hard in some cases. You know, there's a lot of wiggling around the regulations that goes on in this industry. One of the regulations we had considered as staff, we just never finished the thought, was to, you know, we allow two per bedroom, and you could also add, shall not exceed 10 per structure, or something like that. You know, if we wanted to put a firm number on the number of people that should be in a party, that would basically limit, it wouldn't limit the number of bedrooms, but it would limit the number of people in a unit. So if there is such incidence as Mr. Puffer's describing, that would be caught by that kind of provision.
Yeah, it might make sense to revisit that, or it does make sense to revisit that, but I would like to do it once we have access to Granicus, so we can see data, especially if they provide number of adults, number of children, and how many bedrooms or beds are being advertised, because I do know that at least on Airbnb, they break up number of beds versus number of bedrooms. So maybe that's something to revisit once we have more thorough information from the Before we call for a vote, are there any other comments from staff or commission members on Amendments six and then nine through 15?
I only bring this up out of caution because of the word wiggling. I know that in R3 and R4 zones, some corner properties can be utilized for some commercial purposes. I don't know, I forget if that's general or not, and so I want to just make sure that in the R3 and R4 zones, especially since we have removed them, that they couldn't wiggle around using something.
I mean, I think that short-term rentals generally are considered commercial use under the code as that. Is that right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, short-term rentals are categorized as a commercial service in the zoning code. So there's a distinction between what we call commercial zoning and what might be a commercial use. So we allow limited commercial uses in pretty much every neighborhood. They become more intense as you move towards the downtown or more dense residential areas. But this is really commercial use, and the restriction in R3 and R4 demonstrates that because those are really primarily residential neighborhoods with very light commercial activity. So the districts that have been chosen for short-term rentals are all districts where there's much more commercial activity that takes place.
Thank you. Any further comment from commission?
So wait, so, so could someone set up a short-term rental in a corner lot of a three and four?
No, because they would need to have a rental occupancy permit.
Yeah.
So I think they, they wouldn't be able to get around it, or they would be operating illegally.
Gotcha.
Okay. Short-term rental, only single-family structures, home stays must be owner occupied, and a single-family home also. So it would eliminate the type of structure that you're referring to unless they got a variance.
Because like, to the chair's point, we would prevent that rental license.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Question.
Could we have the Commissioner Weeks speak, and then we'll invite you back up, Mr., Mr. Puffer? One of the commission members had a question.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Are STRs and home stays monitored?
At the moment, I would say very lightly. We, with this new service we have, and I haven't gotten all the data from them yet. We're actually in the, the mode of providing them all of the data so they can kind of load their system. And then they basically, we, we provide them all of the tax assessor's data, which says what kind of structure it is, how many bedrooms, et cetera. And then as they see units come on the market, they compare it to that data set, and then they tell us whether things are compliant or not. So at the moment, the county says that there's about 45 or so units in the city. We have record of 42 units in the city. Granicus says that they have 197 identified. I asked them what their accuracy was in that estimate, because they haven't done all of the deep diving, and they, they said it, it may change by a percent, but it's generally, you know, pretty dead-on, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Puffer, please approach the podium.
I think it is now.
Yep.
I have a question about the renovation that is going on in these STR units, converting single-family houses to two units. I don't know whether you're aware of that, but it's going on. And I'm not sure how that fits into where you're at right now. But does this, does this ordinance eliminate the conversion of a single-family house into two units? And if it does, what's the status of the ones that are already being done or have been done? Do they stay? Do they go?
Yeah.
This is, this is tough, because they're taking some great residences, as this gentleman has pointed out, and actually converting them into what may be a semblance of a two-unit apartment.
Sure. Can I make a couple of clarifications? So a single-family unit can have two, three, four, you know, bedrooms in it, but the whole unit, the whole structure actually, is a single unit with many, with could be multiple bedrooms. In some cases, a, a, a single-family home that has two bedrooms, they might be able to divide up the interior of the building to create a third bedroom. That would not be considered a two or three unit. That's still one unit, but with three bedrooms.
Okay.
If there is a single-family home, and someone actually divides the structure for there to be permanent walls, so that they are really leasing one unit separately from the other unit, that would become a zoning code issue. We don't allow those conversions in all neighborhoods. In some cases, we might by right, but that would also become a building permit issue. They would have to get a new unit inspected by the city in order to rent it properly. So there tends to be a lot of oversight over those sorts of situations. But we do allow for some structures that are large enough, I forget the exact threshold now, of the 2,500 square feet for a unit, we allow some of those to be converted into multiple units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those converted units that are no longer single-family dwellings would not be permissible under the current short-term rental text amendments.
I think there's some of that going on. I, I, I do.
And if you're aware of any units, Mr. Puffer, that you want to, you have us look at, please don't, don't hesitate. Don't hesitate to reach out to us, okay? We, we can always address those on, on an enforcement level. My understanding is that the code, as we're proposing it, would, would not allow for those situations to occur. Understood. Point well taken. It's a fine balance between wanting to create a mixed-use neighborhood where people can walk to a cafe, or a pet grooming place, or a barber, and also making sure that those commercial uses don't, you know, create nuisances for the neighborhood. But we, we really have tried to select businesses that are appropriate for the neighborhood and allow them to operate there.
Mr. Smith, would you like to clarify why or? Okay. So short-term rentals are classified as a commercial use, but because some commercial uses are allowed by right in residential areas, there doesn't have to be a zoning hearing to allow for a variance to have a short-term rental in, in a residential neighborhood.
I think there's a difference between the category of.
Mr. Puffer, I'm sorry, could you use the mic just for our listeners online? I, I don't, I think last time I looked, we had two people tuned in to the meeting this evening.
Okay. Here, here we go again. I think there's a difference between the short-term rentals and the classification that you've just put in for small buildings. When you start to look at the traffic into these STRs.
Could you please clarify what you mean by small building?
Well, the, the.
The homestay?
The homestead, yes. There's a lot of difference between that and, and what these STRs are, are doing. And they, when you, when you, when you take three bedrooms, and you have two people in a bedroom, and you run this, if you have to rent that out twice a week, now we have 12 people a week theoretically. This is a lot of traffic coming through these. And we felt that this should be a commercial venture because of that.
It, it is classified as, as a commercial use, but because it's a commercial use that's specified to be by right or allowed by right in residential areas, that is why there doesn't have to be a zoning hearing to allow a short-term rental in a, in a residential neighborhood. So that would be, you know, a, a different, or amending an existing zoning text.
It sounds to me, Mr. Puffer, like you're suggesting a special exception be required for short-term rentals. This would require public notice in the, in the paper. It would require a zoning hearing board meeting.
Right.
Where they would review the potential impacts to the neighborhood for that particular use, and if they meet the list, then they're approved by right. It's actually considered a by-right use, but for certain uses that have particular nuisances that come with them, like a bar, for instance, there may be a special exception required. At the moment, that, that is not in the ordinance, so I think we could definitely consider that going forward. There, there may be some additional nuance that we could add to our, the current regulations.
The dollar volume for the STRs is way beyond what these homes, what is it? Home, home, the new category?
Homestay.
Homestay.
Way, way beyond.
Right.
114 East Vine Street, I just did a, I was curious to know what kind of volume he had to do. And with the mortgage that he has, and a reasonable structure of, of cost to run the building, he has to do somewhere in the middle 50,000 range in order to pay for the building. And that's without making a cent for himself. If you take a 4% return on a half a million dollar building, this, this, in the first place, it amounts to about a little over $1,000 to $1,100 a week is what he's got to generate in order to, to support the building. If he makes $20,000 on it, that takes it up to $1,500 a week. You're, you're talking, you're talking about a lot of volume here, and this is one of the reasons that we felt that it should be considered a commercial.
Great. Great, thank you. Is there any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Commissioner Weeks.
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert.
Aye.
Commissioner Polite.
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega-Brown.
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously for zoning text amendment, proposed zoning text amendments number six and then nine through 15.
Congratulations, Planning Commission. I know this, this really requires a lot of in-depth discussion and, you know, attention and thought from you all, so I, I don't take your time for granted here. And thank you to members of the public who have been engaged as well in, in this process. There's more to come. This next set of amendments is very unexciting. As background, the, the wireless facilities code for the state was changed, and so we're having to update our ordinance to be in line with that. The attached draft ordinance and design guidelines aim to accomplish a few things. One, they maximize local control for us over wireless facilities. Two, they remove public right-of-way regulations on wireless facilities from zoning, and instead they move those regulations to the public right-of-way ordinance, section 263. That's a requirement of the state law. Number three, they create a design guideline that preserves the aesthetic and historic character of the city. So I, I haven't really been able to devise a simple way to walk you through these, because I have to admit, they, they are quite complex. If you want to bear with me, I will kind of, I'll try to skim and provide you some context here. So there are amendments to certain definitions here. The first one, we're, we're adding some definitions for co-location, substantially change, and underground area, so that we can clarify where these facilities are, are going. There's a note on the side that says that some of this is established by federal law, and there's a full definition that's provided there for, you know, what all of this basically means. So it references a portion of the federal code, 47 CFR, and there's a lot more detail about what it means to substantially change. Basically, if you, if you substantially change the facility, you, you have to apply certain regulations to it. You have to, suddenly, it's now under review again. But there are some slight modifications you can make to existing facilities without substantial Moving on to section two. So we're removing a large section of our current wireless facilities ordinance because that's being moved to the, to the right-of-way ordinance. So section three, again, we're repealing a section of the ordinance because it's no longer applicable by federal code. Section four, so general and specific requirements for antennas in historic areas. This is an area that I tried to really focus on in my amendment writing. We wanted to make sure that historic structures didn't get obscene antennas put on top of them. That was the, the basic goal. So we have a section drafted here, it says, "No telecommunications antenna may be located upon any property or any, or on a building or structure that is listed on either the National or Pennsylvania Register of Historic Places or eligible to be listed. All applications for telecommunications antennas that do not fall under the provision of the PA Broadband Co-location Act and are located in the Heritage Conservation District shall be reviewed by the City of Lancaster Historic Preservation Specialist." So basically, if it's not a historic, a national register structure, but it's within our historic district, then we get review over that antenna going on the structure. And it has to ensure that stealth technology is chosen for the proposed structure and is appropriate and conforms to city requirements. So stealth technology are things that blend the antenna into the structure. Next, there's a new section that's being added under small wireless facilities. This is clarifying that wireless facilities that are located inside the public right-of-way shall be permitted in all zoning districts. As I mentioned, we cannot, as zoning, regulate the public right-of-way according to this new state legislation. So that's what that means. And ones that are located outside of the public right-of-way, in other words, on private property, shall be permitted, permitted use in the following zoning districts, subject to prohibitions. And we have C3 Regional, CM Central Manufacturing, and SM Suburban Manufacturing. So basically, this bans most of these antennas from private property throughout most of the city. There are small portions of the historic districts that are within C3, CM, and SM, so there may be some small reviews. If these antennas have to go into the city, they will have to go into the public right-of-way. Actually, the city has no choice when it comes to the public right-of-way. We are forced to allow these wireless facilities to co-locate in the city. So they can use our existing light poles, our existing even traffic lights in some cases. We can say how they can be installed, but we have very little authority to say where. So we banned them where we could. We regulated them in a way where we could. We regulated them in a way where we could. Public Works is working on the right of way ordinance and will be going to council with us in April. So the following requirements shall apply to all small wireless facilities that are located outside the public right of way. So here we get into a number of documents and things that must be submitted. Latitude and longitude, evidence that the property owner is basically permitting this on, on their property. Documentation demonstrating compliance with requirements of the zoning ordinance, including construction engineering drawings, self-certification. That it is required to achieve capacity and coverage for wireless facilities. In other words, they can't just throw these in just because they want them there. There has to be some reason. They need to demonstrate compliance with our design manual and, and complete the checklist that we have created. So if they've made a good faith determination that, that it cannot meet the service reliability and functional objectives for, in the co-location, then basically they can. Sorry, let me start over on this. So they basically have to co-locate on an existing facility or prove that they need it to appear otherwise. So we're trying to use them to, force them to use the current facilities that they have to their maximum potential. And then they have to justify if not. They have to employ a qualified engineering expert as well. And there are some standards of care that we list, that things have to be kept in good condition. And we reference the appropriate Pennsylvania code there. They shall, so wireless facilities actually cannot be located in an underground area. You might remember earlier in this, we defined underground area, which is an area of the city where all utilities have to be underground. This is like the central business district downtown. You may have noticed there's no telephone poles and wires everywhere. That's one of our underground districts. So they can't locate there on private property. There must be engineering inspections. All of the designs have to comply with our design manual, visual appearance. The applicant shall ensure that existing vegetation, trees, shrubs within the proximity of the wireless facility shall be preserved to the maximum extent possible. We don't want trees and vegetation being cut down for these antennas unnecessarily. They have to employ stealth technology. There can be some ground mounted units, but they have to be screened from the public using stealth technology or vegetation. Tree permits must be pulled. They have to pull building permits, especially if they're increasing their height. Again, they, they can't be located within 100 feet of any historic buildings on the National Register. If there's graffiti, they have to remove them. There's also minimum setbacks. Depending on their height. Let's see, there's timing approvals, which we have no say over. Those are set by federal law. We reserve the right to inspect according to the zoning ordinance. They have to carry $1 million per occurrence and property damage coverage. So they have to have proper insurance. And there's an indemnification clause saying that the owner of the facility shall fully indemnify and hold harmless city and its officers, employees, et cetera. And then there's some miscellaneous things that are really just hardly worth mentioning. We have police powers. If any of this section is in conflict with another section, this ordinance is still valid and the effective date is immediately. So that's the, it's a very quick version of the current ordinance. I'll pause there and we can, we can go over any questions. There is a design manual that's, you know, six or seven pages long that reiterates some of the things that I already touched on, but it gets more into some of the technical language. Any questions on the wireless facilities ordinance?
I mean, I know that this is in response to Pennsylvania updating state regulation of these facilities. Have any other municipalities in our area already passed their ordinance for these facilities? Or are we expecting that we're going to have to make some modifications down, down the line?
So it's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine that we're probably being pretty proactive about this compared to most municipalities. We did hire outside legal counsel that specializes in communications legislation and they actually drafted most of this. We did a very thorough review and we, we made some, some comments in partnership with our, our solicitor. There, so there was a little bit of back and forth, but thankfully we had good legal counsel that helped with this. Initially, there were industry advocates that basically came to us years ago and they crafted our original ordinance. Now that's being completely amended, but by lawyers who are familiar with municipal code and what our rights are. So I think we're in a much better position actually this time, even though some rights are being taken away by the state. We're, we're writing this ordinance from a very different perspective than, than we were previously. I don't suspect that we're going to have many amendments to this going forward, given that we've basically maximized control over things. The design manual is one area where we might want to tweak things as we learn how stealth technology is employed in the city.
Great, thank you for the context and clarification.
I do got a question on section four. Historic areas. So I, I like that we are using the Heritage Conservation District because that covers a wide swath of the city. But I did notice when I checked out the map real quick that that doesn't cover a good portion of southwest and of also southeast Lancaster City. So what, what are like the parameters around? I mean, I, I know this is not our ball court necessarily, but what are the parameters around the Heritage Conservation District? And is there anything we can do, like set a distinct parameter to protect those areas as well?
We, you know, I don't know offhand how that district has expanded. I, I'm sorry, I don't know that at the moment. But I just want to remind you that these are also relegated to the zoning districts named earlier, C3, CM, SM. And I don't think much of that exists in the southeast. So when it comes to these antennas or the, the wireless facilities, those areas of the city are protected just pretty much the same as any other district. So these are, these are basically forced to the more outskirts, suburban annex areas if they're on private property. If they're in the public right of way, we have no say.
So let's say, let's just use a C3 zone as an example. Let's say that a wireless facility wanted to be constructed there. Like I, I guess I just want to make sure that, so a wireless company can't just be like, oh, C3 Regional, we're just going to put it there.
They could within the parameters of this ordinance. I mean, there's a lot of caveats to how they can put it there. And if there's a historic building that's within the C3 or there's a portion of the Heritage Conservation that's there, then they would have to, you know, abide by all of those restrictions. They would still need to use stealth technology regardless. So there, there are a lot of caveats. I would say, in my opinion, this is about as strict as we could limit them without getting ourselves into a precarious legal situation. Because we can't ban them, otherwise we're not allowing for the use.
Just for sake of the conversation, can we pull up a zoning map real quick?
Sure. Mr. Kedro, could you do that?
Which number?
Uh, zoning ordinance, oh, sorry, the zoning map, right? You want, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
So S, well, let's, gosh, they're actually so scarce. C3 is, I think, Park City. If you go out to the mall here, that would be an example of C3. So they would be permitted out there. SM Suburban Manufacturing is some of the gray area that you see. Oh, that's CM. SM, I think, is the far eastern corridor out there, yeah, on here.
Gotcha.
Yeah, SM. And there might be a little bit in the south of the city. Yeah, where the Keystone, the former Keystone Opportunity Zone is, there's CM, so.
On Manor Street where Kunsler is located also in the southwest corridor on Manor Street. It looks like there's CM.
Yeah, so there are small industrial pockets in the city that are zoned that way.
I think I'm, I'm personally most concerned about the C3s. That might sound weird for me to say, but, you know, we're talking about character of neighborhoods and whatnot. The C3 zone up over, in the northeast part of town is what concerns me the most, I think. Because there is some section where I could see, where I could see them attempting to put facility there. I feel like the C3 zones are sparse out enough in the manufacturing zones above. Is there any way we could prevent it in the C3 zone at the moment?
I would not feel comfortable making that recommendation.
Okay.
Before we have any, is there any additional staff comment?
I'll just add to that and say that, again, I, we've basically limited this as much as we can. The C3 district is, aside from that pocket, and that's, that's also a fairly industrial pocket, we've, we've limited this to areas that are, that have no residential in them at all. And we, you know, we've done that purposefully. If we go beyond this, we really limit it to a point where we, we put ourselves in a precarious position. You know, as you know, we need to provide for all uses in some way, somewhere in, in the city by law.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before we move on to any further discussion by members of commission or the member of the public who is here, could we have a motion in a second? And this is for just the proposed zoning text amendment number 16, dealing with the wireless facilities.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number 16 as recommended by the city planning staff.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sufert. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sufert and a second by Commissioner Ortega Brown. I'll now call for the vote. Commissioner Weeks.
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert.
Aye.
Commissioner Polite.
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown.
Aye.
The motion to recommend a proposed zoning text amendment number 16 passes unanimously. Onto our next agenda item. Number four is our annual reorganization meeting, which has the review of fiscal year or calendar year 2021, election of officers, and then the upcoming program. I guess we will wait for Mr. Smith's return.
Sounds like a good idea.
We will come back to item number four and move to item number eight, public participation.
Thanks, yeah. Ben Lesher, 700 Block of East Orange Street. So just wanted to say a word of appreciation and support, encouragement for all the work that you guys do specifically amend, you know, going through amendments, the zoning ordinance. I was just at a group meeting earlier today with Lancaster leadership and some Thaddeus Stevens students and they were going through some land use planning, sort of case studies, taking a site and trying to imagine what could be possible there. And it was just exciting to see that, but it just reminds me of how important this work is and especially, you know, crafting, kind of doing the comprehensive planning and also the zoning ordinance is so important to our communities. So thanks for the work you do. And I quite frankly wish there was more people here because it's really important. And by the time, you know, subdivision plans, land development plans come to you all, it's, it's often too late in many ways. And so I just want to say I appreciate your care and consideration, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for sitting through this meeting tonight. So we will now move back to agenda item number four, the annual reorganization meeting.
Well, this is, Ms. Ritchie, this is kind of your show with the election of officers. This is, you know, according to our bylaws, we have to hold this meeting. We're actually supposed to do it in February. And we can't, I, I don't know how we missed it for two meetings, but here we are in March, getting around to it. The two officer positions that have to be elected is just chair and vice chair. And. That's really all I think I have to say. I can pull up the bylaws just to make sure that we're doing this accordingly, but it's, you know, there's really not much of a trick to this procedure. So I think technically, don't we have to name a temporary chair before we?
I don't, I don't know. I don't remember.
Okay.
It's been a while since we did this.
So I'll say in the past, we, we've done this in two ways. If, if there is a resounding nomination here, I encourage someone to, to make that bold move. We've also taken the approach where two people who will form a nomination committee and those two people are responsible for reaching out to a potential chair member or multiple members and talking with them, you know, are you interested in serving as chair? Does you feel, you know, called to do that, comfortable? And then they would bring those, you know, one or two candidates of recommendation back to the commission for, excuse me, for appointment. So we can take one or, or other of the approach. Curious what, what you all feel called to do.
So point of clarification, I'm currently serving as chair and Mr. Polite is currently serving as vice chair. I would be willing to serve as chair again for the next year until the 2023 annual reorganization meeting.
Yeah, I guess also, yeah, I would be willing to serve as the vice chair for the 20, to the 2023.
With that being said, if I'm in line, I make a motion to move forward with those two remaining in those positions.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Smith, do we need to take these separately or can the vote be done together since the motion was combined?
It can be done together, it's no problem.
I'll do, perform a roll call vote. So Commissioner Weeks.
Aye.
Commissioner Sufert.
Aye.
Commissioner Polite.
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown.
Aye.
The motion to point myself, Jocelyn Ritchie, as chair and Commissioner Nelson Polite as vice chair until the 2023 annual reorganization meeting passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations both.
Okay, I will turn this over to Mr. Okay, I will, uh, turn this over to Mr. Smith for the review of 2021.
Sure, um, and I'm just gonna, I'm double checking our bylaws here, just making sure that we're, we don't need to do anything else. Nope, I don't think so. One thing we do need to take care of, and I will try to do that at our next meeting, um, maybe, Mr. Kajo, you can make a note of this to help me as well. Um, we need to have you all sign financial disclosure forms as well. We, uh, we've, I really want to make an effort to have all of us do that this year. So, uh, at our next meeting, we'll come prepared with those forms. They're very simple. Basically, it's gonna, uh, ask you whether you own additional properties. Um, I think it asks, uh, about, uh, large sums of outstanding debt, and, um, I think there may ask about, like, political donations that you may have received or something to that effect. Um, they're pretty simple, so I think we can fill them all out if we all take 10 minutes to walk through it. So, we'll try to do that at, at the next meeting. Um, with that, I will begin our subdivision of land development report, which is also required by ordinance that I provide. Um, so we're looking at back over the year 2021. Um, so I'll just, I'll breeze through this. Um, total land development applications includes all of the requests that you would have voted on here or that staff would have, uh, acted on. We have a decrease actually in 2021, uh, down to 28 applications. Um, what's interesting though is that the size of the applications, and I'll get into, they have grown. Um, so we have eight final land development plans submitted in 2021, uh, one preliminary plan, two minor plans, nine waivers, six waivers from the planning commission, two modifications, and we did not deny anything. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So, this is a summary of projects, um, uh, that have financial guarantees outstanding with the city. In 2019, we had, uh, about 3.9 million. Uh, 2020, uh, we had 3.8 million come in in financial guarantees, and then in 2021, it jumped to 4.8. So, this is an indication of the scale of the project really, um, that's coming in. Even though we have some fewer land developments, they've gotten much more complex, um, in, in nature. Um, and then we have some of the projects listed from 2021. Um, the, uh, neighborhood, um, sort of, um, internet center on South Anne Street. Um, we have Doug Shan's proposal, I'm sorry, no, we have, um, Landis Place on King, which is under construction, uh, 215 North Queen. Um, 525 North Duke is the hospital renovation and is really the, the bulk of that money. Uh, small subdivision, um, Hankin's project, 48 West Frederick, um, as well as Mosaic, which is to be determined and will definitely be a substantial sum, and then Redmond's. Summary of approved housing, um, this is also pretty remarkable too. So, a number of housing units proposed in 2018 was 62, and in 2021, we're at 622. So, and, you know, it's, it's inched up each year, but in 2021, uh, we really knocked it out of the park, and I'm expecting the same for 2022. I think it's actually gonna be much higher than the 662. I, I would not be surprised if, um, yeah, if we far exceed that. Uh, most of those are apartments newly constructed, which is also remarkable because, um, prior to, uh, Stadium Row being constructed, um, Mr. Lusher's project, there was actually no new multifamily constructed in the city for 30, 40, 50 years. We're not really sure when, but, uh, it had been a very long time. So, to see this substantial, um, multifamily development apartments in the city is, is really amazing. It's, it's truly a historic moment. Um, we don't see many single-family, um, housing being, being constructed. Um, there's a variety of reasons for that, uh, you know, it's lower density, land value is very high. People want to maximize their investment. No condominiums, and, um, 73 of those units. Is that right? 73 units proposed to be affordable, yeah.
Does the Landis Place on King project?
It would. That was only, well, that should only be about five units, I think.
I know that they're doing, some are home subsidized and then others are self-subsidized.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure if it's including all.
I, I know, um, the Everly Myers brothers also committed to having a portion of their units affordable at, uh, 215 North Queen. I'm gonna have to go back and remind myself what projects were included in that.
Yeah, I would also like to know the, the metric behind affordability, but that's just me.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me circle back around with the commission on, on that particular item. Without having my spreadsheet, I just don't recall. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So, this is looking back at, um, each of the projects from 2018 onwards. Um, just to remind you, some of the projects that we've done. 2019, we didn't get, uh, a ton of housing, but for Stadium Row's 104 apartment, you know, so it was a big jump. Otherwise, you can see, we're really dealing with pretty small residential projects, um, up until then. Uh, next slide. So, 2020 got very busy for us. We finally have some, um, some new construction that came in. Um, we have the Drums, et cetera, the 22 apartments. We, I had a lot of interesting, um, new units come in, some of them being micro units. We approved a total of, um, 18 micro units, and then also, I believe, um, there should be one. Oh, no, actually, a tiny home was in 2021. Uh, and there was another new multifamily building at 30 North Mulberry, um, as well as, uh, um, some major adaptive reuse projects. Uh, the old, um, Steinman Newspaper Buildings on King Street, as well as, uh, Everly Myers projects at, um, the Robberito's Building and the Anytime Fitness, uh, structure. So, in 2021, we really took off though. We have some very large-scale projects, you know, over, you know, in the dozens of, of units and with Hankin proposing as many as, um, 244. Is that, is this a complete list, or is there more on the next page? Uh, go back one moment. I think we're missing, are we missing Mosaic here? Oh, no, Willow Valley, 146. Okay, I just, I missed apartments because they're actually, I guess they might be considered, I guess those are apartments. Anyway. Oh, look at that. He's fast. Okay, next slide. Thank you. Um, so we track, uh, new building footprint in the city. It's kind of a wonky metric. I have, um, but you can see in between 2020 and 2021, we've actually almost doubled, um, the proposed building square footage, and that's due to a lot of this new large construction that's being proposed. Um, summary of fees, uh, you may recall that we amended our fees, I think it was at the end of 2020. So, we were under a different fee structure that year, but starting in 2021, uh, we were under, um, the revised fees. So, even though we had fewer projects, they were larger, and, and we, um, pulled in, uh, additional money. Um, I think that represents our costs, uh, in terms of staff much better. And in fact, it vastly underestimates it. I'll note that we, we actually went through a fee study, uh, recently, and we're, uh, gonna be proposing, uh, a pretty major renovation to all of the city fees. We literally looked at every fee, we estimated all of the staff time that was required for every fee to be administered, and then we multiplied that out by, you know, their, their salary and benefits. So, um, we'll be amending that, that structure probably in the very near future. Um, summary of blight certification, so just as a reminder, um, you know, in accordance with the Lancaster Property Reinvestment Board, we're supposed to, uh, determine structures as certified blighted. Um, then they go to the redevelopment authority for, um, I should say eminent domain proceedings. If the property is taken, then it is sold at market value. So, there's a big drop here. You know, we used to get a lot more of these, but as the market picked up, we got much fewer, and investors are really picking up these properties and running with them, and they're not getting to, to our, uh, our stage. So, we're down to four properties in 2021. There were also interruptions because of COVID, and some of these properties, we weren't able to inspect until, um, you know, we figured out what was going on and how we could navigate the issue. Um, but once we did figure it out, most of these properties were already being picked up by private investors. So, a quick policy summary. Um, last year in February, we revised our bylaws, um, and adopted them. In March, uh, we also formed the Housing Subcommittee in March of last year. Uh, in April, we appointed our first ever alternative members. Um, this was exciting because we're able to expand our, our citizen representation and also the skills that we have on the board here. Um, we also recommended the rezoning of 301, uh, to 341 East Liberty Street, which I suspect will come back before us, um, sometime this year as a, as a multifamily redevelopment. Um, you all provided input on the Meeting in a Box, um, tool that we're using for comprehensive plan outreach. Some of you held meetings in a box, really appreciated. That was valuable for the comprehensive plan effort. I think we had 10 of those meetings, and, uh, we'll be launching, uh, a new variation on those, focused on land use, so we can get better, more geographically specific with neighbors about, you know, what structures, uh, are in your neighborhood that are assets or, or problems for you. And then just related city staff efforts. Of course, we launched the comprehensive plan process, um, which you'll all eventually be asked to, to recommend, um, to city council. Uh, we drafted a new application process and materials. I want to, um, give a shout out to Mandela Kajo, who, uh, has, has done like an extensive amount of work there. Um, our application process was, um, very insufficient. So, uh, we've bolstered all of that. We've provided more materials for the developers so that they can better navigate, uh, this process, and we're collecting more information from them earlier on in the process. Uh, we've designed a new packet, which we'll be posting to the public soon. Uh, we're testing these applications out with developments right now. And then, uh, we reviewed all of the bureau fees, as I mentioned, as part of the city fee study. So, um, that is really just, uh, I think, a snippet of what we do as a planning bureau. I'm focusing on the land development process, but, um, there's so much more that we get into on a daily basis. Um, we have been working with the mayor and the administration on our interim affordable housing strategy. Behind the comprehensive plan, there's, of course, all of the community engagement activities. Uh, we've purchased streetlight data to do transportation analysis. We're participating in a train station district, small area plan. Um, I, I could go on and on. Uh, it, it is a very busy time for planning in the city, and I really appreciate having such an engaged, um, citizen board to work with through all of this. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Um, I just want to say thank you for putting this summary together, and thank you to all of the members of city planning staff for everything you do throughout the year because without your work, there wouldn't be this process either, so, um, yeah, very important. Um, thank you.
Appreciate that, and, uh, I'll say, you know, we have, we have a lot on the horizon this year too, um, comprehensive plan being a big one. But, uh, you know, we're also looking at potentially revising some of our community engagement protocols. Um, right now, I'm working on establishing a way to better notify residents of developments happening in their neighborhoods. You know, you've heard from people who show up here, they want to know more. So, um, we have a GIS tool that is very accessible to staff. They don't need any expertise, where they can grab all of the parcels within a certain distance of, uh, an application, and we'll, we're looking to streamline letters that would, that will be sent out for at least planning commission applications, but potentially for zoning and historic applications too. So, yeah, we continue to just explore new ways of, uh, and better ways of, of doing what we're doing. Um, we have new actual, uh, we have new development materials that are gonna be coming out to help inform residents about this process. Uh, we have a draft, uh, flow chart that will be really useful for developers as well. Um, but we're also, uh, looking at amending our website to capture it under development review, which is much more intuitive to people rather than land development or zoning. And so, uh, we're trying to, we're doing that. Uh, we'll be doing a blog posting, um, giving an overview of this, and also reaching out to the paper to see if they'll run an article, uh, to help residents better understand the development process. There's so much work to do in this arena of education with residents, um, and it never happens fast enough. Uh, but just wanted to give you a glimpse into some of the best practices that, that we're looking at.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of commission? Um, with that, uh, Mr. Smith, do you want to move on to, uh, the last item under the reorganization meeting, the upcoming program?
Sure, I, I kind of touched on all of, um, all of those things. I actually was anticipating that, I guess. I don't think I have a lot more to say. We have a couple of commission members to add. So, um, I will put that out to you guys. If you have someone in mind, we need someone to replace Mr. Moblin in the central part, portion of the city, and we need, uh, an additional, um, alternative member. So, um, you can send me your, your ideas by, by email or by phone call, uh, if you have them. Um, otherwise, I really think our upcoming program is to remain engaged on this development front. There's just, there's so much to learn and do here, um, and the comprehensive plan. I'll, you know, be giving you better updates about, um. Things have been a little slow there because we just have some large documents we're trying to amend and get through. We have an engagement report that's gonna be coming out soon to document what we've, uh, done with the neighborhoods. Um, we also have our existing conditions report, um, which if anyone is interested in revising with me, I welcome it. It's about 78 pages or something. Um, and, uh, the, I think the comp plan is really the big one. So, we need to figure out a future land use map. What kind of density do we want to see in the city? Um, where do we want tall buildings? You know, if you, if you live in a neighborhood, would you be okay with a multifamily structure in your neighborhood? How about size of units, you know? Are, these are some of the things that we'll have to grapple with, uh, on the housing front. Um, there's other transportation and park and, and, you know, other related, um, items. Uh, you know, a question I posed to city staff today, because I was presenting to leadership on, uh, the comprehensive plan, I said, "We have 2,500 new units in the pipeline right now." That's about, that's a, that's a minimum of a 5% increase in city population, potentially a lot more. And what do we need to do as a city to accommodate these new residents? Um, it's a big question, you know? Do we need more parks? Do we need more social services, more spaces for youth? I mean, there's, there's so many things, right? So, I encourage you all to grapple with that question because it's a big one for the comp plan. And I think also what kinds of development, uh, do you want to see in your neighborhood? Uh, we, we'd like to do a visual preferences survey, um, with, uh, both the, the planning commission and the comprehensive planning, uh, committee to try to understand what kinds of development you want to see in your neighborhood. So, you can look forward to that. Um, there's so much to unpack on this front, but anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that. It's getting late.
Next item on the agenda is our Housing Subcommittee. Um, Mr. Smith and I briefly talked about having the, um, comprehensive plan consultants come in and present on the, uh, housing market study that they did for the city, uh, at a future meeting. I think that would be valuable information, uh, for the commission ahead of a larger presentation of the, the comprehensive plan. Um, we are still planning on having other, um, affordable housing developers come in and talk through, um, the funding stack, uh, for an affordable housing development too, uh, at a future meeting.
Um, Mr. Ritchie, would you be able to, um, give some thought to who that might be and maybe reach out to a couple people?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want me to just send it by email?
Sure.
Contact?
Yeah, that'd be great, and we can look, you know, a month or two out even if needed, but it'd be good to get that on the calendar.
Okay, I will send you some, um, names and, and contact information after this meeting. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the comprehensive plan report. Is there any report from staff?
I think I covered it all.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other business?
Mandela, do you have any other business?
Okay. Uh, and then we already covered, uh, public participation. Um, so, at this time, uh, 8:46 PM on Wednesday, March 16th, 2022, I will adjourn this meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.